Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of March the 9th, 2015. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will list, will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearing, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. This is an open meeting night. If you are up here, please spell your name for us so we get it correct. Go ahead and call the first item, please.
We would request that those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Public hearing consent agenda are items one through seven.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
We can vote on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Items one through seven. Item five is introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, go ahead one more time with that. One through...
One through seven are the items under the consent agenda and five is setting the hearing date.
Okay.
Introduced by Christensen.
Okay, and seconded by Trent. Discussion, color roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Carried six to zero. Under public hearing liquor resolutions, item eight, application of ZipLine Brewing Company, LLC, doing business as ZipLine Brewing Company, to expand its Class L liquor license by the addition to the area for a new licensed area described as a single-story building approximately 120 feet by 106 feet with an outdoor area approximately 12 feet by 40 feet located at 2100 Magnum Circle Suites 1 through 3.
Good afternoon.
Oh, and you'll, uh, oath. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony you are about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. State your name and address.
My name is Craig Ryer. My address is 1740 South 49th Street in Lincoln. I'm here on behalf of ZipLine Brewing Company. One of our owners, Tom Wilmouth, was planning on being here today, but he was called out of town and sends his regrets. You might have read recently that ZipLine is growing. We feel fortunate that the community has embraced us in this way. In order to meet the demand, we have applied to expand our existing brewing facility into Suites 2 and 3, immediately adjacent to our existing facility in Suite 1. All of this will occur in the existing footprint of the building, and there will be no additions to the space. To be clear, we will not be serving beer in the additional space. The space will be used solely to package beer. Therefore, the application has no effect on our taproom. As I noted, we remain incredibly grateful for the support of our community. We thank you for considering our application. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
You want to do an ad? You have the right to do an ad real quickly if you are new for ZipLine.
I'm good.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Nine and 10 all call together. Application of Holmes Golf Incorporated, doing business as Holmes Golf Course for a Class C liquor license at 3701 South 70th Street and the associated application of the manager, Scott E. Weahay, for Holmes Golf Incorporated, doing business as Holmes Golf Course at 3701 South 70th Street. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
State your name and address.
Scott Weahay. Address is 3205 Curtis Drive here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I do have a letter here. Could I pass out to the council members?
You can take that.
Sure. Good afternoon, Council Chair Emery and members of the Lincoln City Council. Thank you for your consideration of my application for a Class C liquor license. The materials you received related to my application do include a report from the Lincoln Police Department that identifies several judgments against me that are of a personal, financial nature and are also quite humbling. The civil judgments are nearly entirely all related to medical expenses that have plagued my family over the years in spite of having a costly health insurance plan. All of these judgments but one have been resolved, and the one remaining will be taken care of within the next 90 days.
Carl.
Yes, thank you, Scott. You're, you've worked for Lincoln Golf Courses for a while. How long have you been?
Over 30 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
And during that time, I've seen you at Pioneer and the Junior Course and Holmes, so you've made, made the rounds?
I just have two more, and I will make the whole circle, yes.
All right, thank you.
John.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Weahay, and I respect your testimony and appreciate your addressing a sensitive issue there. I have a question for you, especially with your 30-year history of the golf courses and all. We've, over this period of time, and I don't recall the exact dates, but it's gone to where there's been the expand, the allowance of alcohol and the expansion from pure beer and wine, say, and now we're looking at Class C and so forth. And help me understand, you know, we've got a municipal course. This isn't privately owned, and having alcohol service there, and you may have followed the past, and I've always kind of questioned the municipal, which has some tax advantage or some advantages over the other private courses. Help me understand the justification for serving a full line of alcohol on the golf course of the city.
Okay. First of all, I would say that years and years ago, 30 years ago, when I first started, we would have strictly been selling beer inside the pro shop. We wouldn't have allowed it outside on the golf course until, I'm going to be wrong here, but I would say maybe over the last 12 to 15 years. And most of that was, came from pressure from our golfing public who really demanded that they wanted it outside because we were the only ones who were not allowing it out on the golf course. All of the private-owned courses and country clubs were allowing it outside. And I would say along that same line, that's where we got into a little more full service, and we went from just beer to beer and liquor. Was also sort of just a demand of our customers and following those same lines where at the private clubs and the privately-owned public golf courses, they did have a full line. So we were just trying to keep up with everybody else. They were, they were, they came along before us, and we've just sort of followed suit just so that we can maintain competition with them, not gain an edge.
And again, I'm probably being repetitive, but what you've observed in the past, but I guess my concern is the city-owned courses don't pay property taxes. The private ones do. So there's an edge there naturally or financially. And, and you're right, I know I've heard too from city municipal golf patrons, they wanted the alcohol service.
Right.
I've just had a, I guess, a mental challenge here.
Sure.
Of not, you know, trying to keep a level playing field there, and so just the service. And I think it's all been done responsibly on the city courses. I just, now it seems like there's equality on what you can provide in services, but you have a subsidy because you don't pay taxes.
Sure, actually, I believe that we do have that one advantage. There's no doubt about it. But I think we also are at some disadvantage in that we are owned by the municipalities, and we don't have the ability without coming in front of you folks here, or at least through our superiors with the Parks and Recreation Department, to make any spur-of-the-moment changes that might help us compete with the privately-owned golf courses who are able to very quickly decide that they want to, for instance, beat our price on a green sphere or a golf cart or a bottle of beer. So anytime that we want to do something like that, we, we have to go through the lines of communication and ask for permission from several different people before we're able to do that. So we're always, I think, a little behind the private sector on being able to do anything like that. So although there is the property tax issue, that might be our only advantage over the privately-owned courses.
And I want to commend you too, because I think Lincoln is very blessed to have the courses it has. They're just outstanding and another amenity for our city.
Thank you, I, I agree.
So I'm not sure yet how I'm going to vote, but I just...
Point taken. Let's, we're going to move back towards the...
Thank you.
...item, which is, are we going to approve it or not? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this issue? Come forward.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. I was at this facility, this is the new facility, right?
Correct.
Okay. I was there at a function a few weeks ago, and liquor was served at that time. How does this relate to that incident?
I won't speak for them.
Yeah.
Come right on up. Jerry, you want to come or somebody, please?
I believe you were probably talking about the dinner for the Freedom Force people?
Yeah.
Friendship Force.
Yeah, Friendship Force, I apologize.
The liquor permit that's currently in effect is held by Tim Rowland, who's the golf pro there. So this is, this will take effect, I believe, I don't know the exact date, but it's currently covered by Tim Rowland's liquor permit at the service out at Holmes.
Yeah, we're operating on a T O P, Temporary Operating Permit, right now for 90 days.
Correct.
And that would have been in effect during this dinner.
Okay. So what you want is a permanent liquor license, is that it?
Correct.
Okay.
Or a different owner? Or a different name? Go ahead.
If I may, I'm not sure there's communication here. Are you asking why they served at a, at event, or just...
I, I'm just wanting to know, since they're asking for this...
Correct.
...how was the liquor provided at the other event? He answers that it's temporary.
When you change managers, you have to, you have to reapply for a permit. And they're changing managers.
And this is permanent that he's asking for?
Well, as long as he's there and in charge.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Item 11 is the application of McKinney's Pub LLC, doing business as McKinney's Irish Pub for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 20 feet by 60 feet at 151 North 8th Street on March 17th, 2015, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. You don't have to take it on the...
Please state your name, though.
Joel Shasso, 5970 Gunnison Court, Lincoln, Nebraska.
You want to speak to this, please?
Basically, we're putting together an Irish festival for St. Patrick's Day. We had a pretty successful St. Patrick's Day last year, and I think it's a, a good thing for the city. Got a lot of entertainment going on out front, DJ, live entertainment. It will be completely fenced off, so, and there will be security at every entrance, off-duty police officers involved to make sure that everything goes according to plan. And this is the first year, so we don't know exactly what to expect, but we would like to see it grow, and I think it could turn into a really nice festival for the Haymarket area and Lincoln, combined with McFarland's and McKinney's.
Questions? John?
And maybe just for the benefit of our viewers, could you explain the, the dimensions and where exactly this would be located?
Um, yeah, because there is probably a little bit of confusion. The official address of the, of McKinney's is 151 North 8th Street, and we're actually located on P Street. Our building faces P Street, it's a big building there. So we're Suite 140, which happens to face P Street. So the, the spot of our application is 60 feet wide along P Street, and it goes 20 feet out into the street. So from what would be the west boundary of McKinney's, we'd go 60 feet to the east towards 8th Street and 20 feet out from basically where our beer garden currently is, or the sidewalk café, would go out into the street.
So it'd be about 10 feet on your sidewalk, 10 feet on the street?
Um...
20 feet.
Roughly. I think it actually goes 20 feet out from the curb, so there's 26 total feet when you go six feet from our sidewalk to the, to the curb and then 20 feet further out. Have to look at the...
You might want to correct that, because then you could have a gap there where you're walking across.
There's definitely a gap for people to walk through between the two events that are located in the same area.
And that was going to be in the middle of the street?
In the middle of the street, correct.
Yeah. You might, just for legality's purposes, maybe check there, that, check, that's a procedural thing.
Yep.
And I just want to mention, I don't know if you watched the testimony last week, but I had some questions of your colleague across the street.
Yeah, I was a little nervous about that.
Well, and I, I followed, you know, your application. You've done it very professionally. Again, I have some questions, and I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues to review what the city's policy is on various use of the right-of-way, especially street closures, because we've got lots of restaurants, sports bars and everything, and it could be, we just want to make sure we have a consistent policy.
Absolutely.
So I may vote against your application, but I want you to know, it's nothing personal. I just, I want to, I'm looking forward to that and wish you well.
Thank you.
And Carl, I'm sorry, Roy.
I'm assuming you have coordinated, you mentioned entertainment?
Yes.
And you've coordinated the entertainment with McFarland &amp; Sons?
Yes.
So you're not going to have a Battle of the Bands going on?
Absolutely, yes.
Right? Okay.
Yeah, that was a point of discussion, to make sure that we...
Okay. Any, any more discussion? Thank you very much.
Hello.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Shall we vote on the liquor?
I would like to move approval of items eight through 11.
Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion?
I'll just make comment where you're including them together. I'm probably going to vote against the package then, and just I have, as I expressed here, I have a couple of concerns and...
Okay. Anybody else? Color roll, please.
And this is on all those items?
That's correct.
Eight, nine, 10, 11?
Correct.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Motion carried, five to one. Okay, moving along. Public hearing resolutions, item 12. Authorizing acceptance of the low bid to Bryn and Jones, which is in excess of 25% over the estimate for the 36th and Gladstone Paving District number 2631.
Yeah, I moved to delay one week with continued public hearing until 316.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. We delayed this a week ago because we asked the, all the parties to go back and have a meeting. They're not able to get the meeting scheduled until Wednesday of this week. So clearly, without the meeting, we didn't get much accomplished, so we will hold it over another week if that's the vote.
If someone's here, they could...
Yep, you could speak to it if there's, somebody would like to speak to it, you're welcome to. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Okay, want to color roll, please? Yeah, John was, John was the second. Color roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion to lay five, zero.
And I would, I would be remiss if I didn't thank all the parties for trying to get this meeting lined up so we can get to the bottom of this. Thank you. Go ahead.
Item 13 is a use permit, 15002, application of T and N Investments for authority to construct a multifamily development consisting of four 30-plex buildings for a total of 120 dwelling units, including an adjustment to the maximum height, and the parking requirements on property generally located at Northwest 12th Street and Isaac Drive.
Somebody like to speak to this item? Come right on in. You speaking for or against?
Neutral.
Okay, well, you go, and then I'll have the people for, that's fine.
Richard Escoville, 733 West Coming Street. So this is my neighborhood. People in Lincoln are missing a great opportunity, and I am very interested in this property since it's close to my home. There's a large opportunity opening for a over 55 group home, duplexes, that is not being met in Lincoln, Nebraska. And that is something that I think is a wise expansion for anybody. And this area here is close to roads, close to downtown, so it's, something like this would be ideal, but just letting my opinion be known that there is lacking of a 55 and over community in, in this city.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Come forward, please.
Jim Tomasic, the owner of this project. Any questions?
Questions about the project? Carl?
Yes. Okay, are there any, do you have any designs or anything of, of what we're going to be looking at?
Yeah, it's, it's on the way.
Okay.
Yeah.
When we'll be seeing that at some point.
I actually just picked up the blueprints on my way down here, and...
Okay.
Studio 951 is doing it, and you'll be getting something.
And what are the, okay, there are four 30-plex buildings?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And looks like each building will have a certain number of, of efficiency units and others one or two-bedroom units?
Right, we have 81 bedroom units and 42 bedroom units.
Okay.
Six D garages that are attached to the buildings, and then 12 that are unattached.
Okay. And look like also there, there's a clubhouse or...
Yeah, clubhouse, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll have an elevator for maybe some of the older people, too.
You know, he looked at you and me, Doug. Golly, looking at just you, John.
Actually, actually, I think he looked, looked at me, and he was only a couple years after me in northeast, so I don't think he ought to be looking real hard. Any other, any other, anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Any other questions for Mr. Tomasic?
Certainly wasn't looking at me.
That'd be nice. Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Okay, next item, please.
Okay, under public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions, item 14 is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter A to change the pay range of utility, safety, and training specialists from A11 to A13.
Good afternoon, Council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. Public Works Department had asked us to look at this position that they have in their department due to some of the duties the position performs and related to the market. So as we conducted a market survey, we felt it was undervalued. We'd like to raise it two ranges from an A11 to an A13. Fiscal impact is about less than $900.
John?
Mr. McDaniel, since you have a pay range there, would over time, could that gap change because you do have a...
I have to.
...a higher range on that?
Well, certainly, you know, as, I mean, for the remainder of the fiscal year, the budget impact is less than $900. On an annual basis, it's around $2,200, so, and they would go up, I think, one more step within the pay range.
Any other questions? Doug, was part of the reason that we did this because we found something that was similar that we could, that we could run those up against each other and balance?
That's correct. We, we went out to the market to look at similar positions in comparable cities in our array, and we found matches that we felt were appropriate.
Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't just...
No. No, it wasn't a dartboard.
Gotcha. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Item 15 is adopting the supplements to the Lincoln Municipal Code dated June 2014 and December 2014 as part of the official Lincoln Municipal Code.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Come on, speak. What? Sorry.
I can speak to it.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Come on up, please. Let the public know what we're voting on, please.
Jeff Perpatrick, City Attorney. This is just a codification of what has been passed by the City Council, so we do a periodic codification.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Item 16 is a change of zone, 05061B, application of Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association to amend the development plan of the Southwest Village Planned Unit Development to adjust sign locations and height on property generally located at Highway 77 and West Denton Road.
Good afternoon, Council. Alan Wood, attorney, appearing on behalf of the Horsemen's Benevolent Protective Association. This is an amendment to the Southwest Village Planned Unit Development. Just by way of background, in 2006, the Southwest Village P U D was adopted, and then in 2009, the city ordinances with regard to ground signs and pole signs were replaced with the term freestanding and then also added what's called center signs. And so this is simply a revision to the P U D to take out the references from grounded pole signs and reference freestanding signs and then to add the center sign. The fact sheet will show on page 12 a table what you think best describes what we're trying to accomplish here, but the, in the end result, this allows my client to construct a, a freestanding sign, you know, next to its property, which will be in accordance with the, the existing city ordinance requirements. And as, as it relates to the center sign, and this would be a center sign, it'll be 35 feet in height, the freestanding signs have a maximum of 10 feet in height. Both of the sign requirements with relating, relating to freestanding and center signs will have enhanced design elements as well. So that is primarily the reason. You'll see through there also that there's some, oh, just general revision to the, how the P U D was designed, moving, parking, and signage and grading provisions to the general provisions of the P U D as opposed to the three specific zoning classifications that you find at Southwest Village. So with that, happy to entertain any questions?
Anybody who'd like to... Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Item 17, text amendment 15001, amending chapters 27.2, 27.6, and 27.63 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the zoning ordinance to allow a commercial solar energy conversion system as a special permitted use in the A.G. District and as a permitted use in the I-1, I-2, and I-3 zoning districts by amending section... and I-three zoning districts by amending section twenty-seven point zero-two point zero four zero to provide a definition for commercial solar energy conversion table, amending section twenty-seven point oh-six point oh-nine oh to add commercial solar energy conversion system to the utilities use group table, and adding a new section numbered twenty-seven point six-three point eight-three zero to set forth the conditions for permitting a commercial solar energy conversion system in the AG district, and repealing sections twenty-seven point oh-two point oh-four oh and twenty-seven point oh-six point oh-nine oh of the Lincoln Municipal Code in their entirety.
David, are you speaking to this?
David Carey with the Planning Department. Here I can answer any questions that you might have. I believe we have someone from LES here to speak specifically to the project if there are some questions about that. Just wanted to kind of make sure that it was clear that this is identifying a special use permit in the AG district. We are already allowing this type of technology in the I districts. This is to allow it in the AG district as a special use permit.
Okay, questions? John?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. A question for you, as we grow in the city, let us go out, and of course, we have jurisdiction over the three-mile limit there. Are there any considerations here of what this ordinance would, any impacts or something just in the future growth, or just to try to think ahead here, that we're not stubbing our toe in any reason? And not to insinuate we are, but?
Sure. No, that's a good question. The, I guess the way to think of this is that we have an opportunity to provide this type of project here locally and to enter that market, so it's one of those opportunities that we wanted to at least allow for the opportunity to do it. And again, this is just in the AG district. This wouldn't be allowed in the AGR district, which would open up a little bit more of a conflict out there where we have some more smaller lots and some homes in those types of districts. So the idea here is that this would not be a proliferation of these types of projects, but we at least would allow those opportunities for this type of business to come in and provide an alternate type of power generation source.
And I'm just trying to think of the infrastructure we have to put in, whether we should reach roads, water services, as we finally, you know, someday down the road, I suppose, we might get to those areas and they become urban.
And another way to look at this is the location of this particular project that is going along with this text change is basically beyond the kind of near-term growth areas, so the immediate conflicts that would come with what you're referring to, if and when that would happen, would be far down the road in the future. So that's an opportunity here that this is more of the best area, type of area, to locate one of these projects, let's put it that way.
But this would apply to all the AG?
Correct.
So not just this area?
That's true. And some of those considerations would go into the site location in the future when things were proposed. One of the bigger considerations for this type of project is the proximity to a power distribution line, so that you can hook up to that, obviously, to the network, and that does have that in fairly close proximity to this parcel. So all those types of site selection process needs would have to go into consideration for future projects to make sure that the, A, it's served, and B, that it's not providing, you know, causing some of those conflicts. So we would take those into consideration with future projects. And that is specifically why the special use permit is part of this approval here in the AAG district, because it's not necessarily just by right. So there would be that level of review that would be needed to make sure that it was all making sense.
So with that special use permit, thinking out loud, would we, let's say, down the road twenty years, there is some potential conflict, or is it just not quite as congruent? Does the special use go away, or are there ways to modify, or once the hard structure, infrastructure is there for this project or a like one? It's there, and it's forever?
Well, the way that it's set up as far as the amendment here is that the special permit would be the mechanism to get the approval. And so up until we feel like it's not necessary, we would have to make that further change to the code, if I'm following your question correctly. But we would hold the special use permit in place in order to make sure that that extra level of review takes place in the AG district.
But once it was approved, then they have it by right thereafter?
Oh, yeah, once it's approved, as long as they're following the conditions of the approval, then they have the right to use it, the land or the parcel for that purpose.
Okay, why just ask in this and other matters as the Planning Department confronts them? Try to think, make sure, because we, infrastructure is expensive.
Yeah, that's part of our job, yep.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Come right up, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Jason Fortick. I'm the Vice President of Power Supply for the Lincoln Electric System.
Would you spell that for me, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
On behalf of and in support of the project. If you go back about eighteen months, we conducted a survey of our customers in the area to see what level of interest there was for adding renewables to our resource portfolio. Solar was one of the categories that were identified as having a lot of support in the community, so that resulted in us later embarking on a program called SunShares, and that allows people to sign up for a minimum of three dollars a month to be added to their electric bill to support a community solar project. So we went out for offers amongst the developing community to see who would be interested and willing to develop a solar project in the area. We got some responses for that that were favorable. In the meantime, we were also soliciting proposals for wind development, and you might recall the announcement that we had towards the end of twenty-fourteen where we're adding a pretty large amount of wind generation to our resource mix. So we're marrying up all of those efforts into one large renewables package that we're offering to the community, the five-megawatt DC solar array that is proposed in these amendments, and then also all of the wind projects that we're going to propose to be added. I think there's good support in the community for this. We've got positive relationship in the conversations that I've had with the underlying landowner, and so we would respectfully request your consideration and approval of these. Let's see, there's a text amendment, and then I believe a special permit associated with this application. Are there any questions?
Questions? Carl?
Yes. Hopefully you can answer this one. I don't remember how long it's been, the two wind turbines that on North Lincoln, North Fifty-Sixth area. Compare the amount of energy generated from those two wind turbines with what will be generated with this solar installation?
Sure. The rating of those two wind turbines adds up to about one-point-three megawatts. And just to put that in context, our system load is just a little bit under eight-hundred megawatts, so it's a relatively small percentage of our total capability. This solar project is rated five-megawatts DC, but then there's conversion to turn it into AC alternating current for the rest of our system, and that drops it down to about a four-megawatt AC contribution. So if you wanted to compare two numbers, you'd have one-point-three megawatts at the two wind turbines, and this would be about four megawatts on the AC side.
Okay. I've often thought of the wind turbines as, I mean, they produce power, but they're somewhat symbolic, and I think in terms of the community and seeing them and thinking more sustainably. This project may be a little bit that way, but it shows promise, I guess, of what we can do with more and larger and new technology, so. And, but also located on the west edge of town by I-eighty. When you drive I-eighty, will you see it?
This is a bit of conjecture on my part. I think it will probably be more visible as you're driving to the east, just because of the way the interstate curves there. It'll probably be easier to see as you look to the north. As you come from the east, it'll be quite as obvious, because you'd have to be looking behind you a little bit, but I think in both instances, you'll be able to see it from the interstate.
Well, have you thought about any signage that would identify what's out there?
Shade.
No shade? Well, we're certainly planning with the developer to have some kind of an entryway kiosk, educational type thing off of Holdridge Street. We're also working with them to see what, if any, signage we could put on the interstate side, the south side of the property. That we haven't fully developed yet, but as the entrance on the, like I said, off of Holdridge Street, we're working on some ways that we could set it up. When people come to tour the site, they could see some examples of the technology and get some information on it.
Great, thank you. Trent?
How long's the power purchase agreement for this site?
It's a twenty-year PPA, and then it has some provisions for rollover rights when we get to the end of that twenty-year period.
And is this the start of maybe other solar projects in and around the city? Do you have, are you working on others around the area?
Not actively working on any right now, but like we relayed in that press conference, if it follows the same trend as like those wind turbines that are on North Seventieth Street, those were kind of us dipping our toe, so to speak, in this new type of energy technology. And then as we got more familiar with it, gained more experience, and got more comfortable with how the PPA terms are lined up, well, then we're able to keep ramping up that participation until we got the really large contracts that we signed at the end of last year. We'd kind of see this going the same way. This is our attempt to try it at a small scale, see how it works, learn about the technology and how it integrates with our system, and then presumably, as we get more comfortable with it, just keep adding to our system at measured and appropriate steps.
And the technology's getting much better, right?
Yeah, the technologies are improving. Probably the things that are in the news the most are the pricing. That continues to drop dramatically, and that brings it more in line to something that can be competitive with some of our other resources.
Thank you.
This is kind of off-the-wall question, but when you compare solar and wind, and think in terms of the area that a solar turbine, or a wind turbine would occupy versus a solar farm, are there any metrics there as far as you get more kilowatts, megawatts off of one over the other for the same space, or cost?
Yeah, there's a few different metrics. We'll see how well I can do them off of my head. I think the rule of thumb we've been using for a solar array, industrial-sized solar array, is about six acres per megawatt. That seems to be a rough rule of thumb when you read about projects that are being built across the country. Just for comparison purposes, one of the projects that we've participated in, it is a hundred-megawatt project, and it's going to take about twenty-two square miles to build all the turbines. They have to have a much larger spacing in between them, so they take up, relatively speaking, they take up a lot more ground. There aren't a lot of solar projects of that magnitude yet. There's some coming, but nothing around this area that's in that hundred-megawatt size yet.
And that was how many, how much of an area for the turbines?
About twenty-two square miles for a hundred-megawatt project.
For a hundred-megawatt. So solar for land area gets you more bang for your buck? Am I understanding that right? Well, at least more per land use.
Yeah, let's see, that would be about thirteen thousand acres, so.
Yeah, two thousand
Yeah.
Times six, about twelve thousand megawatts.
Hundred megawatts.
And I don't know what the cost differentials are on what they produce.
What you typically see, though, is that a wind project will develop more energy per installed megawatt. The metric we use in the industry is capacity factor. The wind blows more consistently in some hours of the day, so the same rating capacity for a wind project will produce more energy over a period of time. It's got a higher capacity factor. The solar projects typically only produce during the sunny periods of the day, and then really produce during the high-sun periods, and so you don't get quite as much energy production out of a similar megawatt rating solar array.
Thank you. Any other questions? Good news is if your matrix wasn't just exactly right, we don't know.
Well, sometimes I still suffer from engineer's disease, so I get hung up on the numbers. Trying to deal with it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs. Who is the developer? Exactly where is it located, and how was the survey conducted?
David, can you answer those questions for us, or you can come right on up?
The developer is a company called Helios Sage, and I believe their offices are in West Virginia, but I'd have to go double-check that, doing that out of memory.
I think, Charlottesville, Virginia?
Yeah. Yeah. And then there was one more question?
How do you spell that name of that company?
Helios Sage, H.E.L.I.O.S.A.G.E.
Okay. And how was your survey conducted?
We hired a firm out of Omaha that did what was intended to be a statistically valid sampling of our customer base to give us numbers that we could reliably say represented the whole customer base.
It was called? You sent out ballots, or what?
All of the above. They used direct mailings, they used email addresses where they had them, and then they also used phone interviews if they had contact information for folks.
And what was the percentage of the response?
Percentage that were in support?
No, just the percentage of the total that was in response.
They continued to solicit people until they got a sufficient number of responses to represent a statistically valid sample size, and so I think that was like four-hundred-fifty or four-hundred-seventy-five respondents that they got actual responses from. And the indication from them was that was a sufficient sample size to say you can draw conclusions on our whole customer base.
What was the total base?
We have about a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand meters in the footprint.
And what was the percentage of validity, or that they considered it true?
I was afraid you were going to ask that question. It depends how you slice and dice the numbers. There were a variety of questions, all intended to provide different answers. I think you could say, based on my not professional opinion of that, because I'm not a statistical sampling expert, it ranged somewhere from about forty percent to eighty percent of the respondents saying they supported additions to our renewable energy portfolio in some manner. And the reason I gave that range is because there were different questions that were intending to find answers on different pieces of customer interest.
Would it affect those people in some way?
It's a voluntary program, so if people want to support the program, they have the option of signing up for that minimum three-dollar-a-month contribution. If they don't participate in the program, well, then there will be no additional charge placed on their customer bill.
Okay, so it'd still be their LES rate? Is that right?
Correct.
Correct. And where is this exactly located?
I think the address is seventy-five oh-one West Holdridge Street. It's on the south side of Holdridge, just diagonally across the road from a substation we have at Northwest Sixty-Eighth and Holdridge.
What if you don't get enough three-dollar benefit out of this? Is it going to come out of your budget?
That was where I mentioned the whole package. We've combined the three pretty large wind projects that we're participating in and this additional solar array into one large package of renewable energy that we're adding to the portfolio. The numbers that were in the press release, as a package, this represents about a four-hundred-and-twenty-nine million-dollar savings to our customers. Vast majority of that, obviously, coming from the wind PPAs that we've entered into.
So would we expect our bills to go down?
Depend on future budget authorizations, future capital projects that are coming up. I think it would be accurate to say it would put downward pressure on rates, but I'm probably not in a position to say that there will be any reduction in rates, but it would certainly help us to maintain low rates.
Okay. Any downside here?
To the solar? I can't think of any downside. You know, I suppose the worst-case scenario would be it just doesn't produce, and we went through all the effort of signing the PPAs and doing the negotiations, and then we have no project to show for it, and then we'd have to start all over and see if we can get favorable or And then we'd have to start all over and see if we can get favorable responses to our RFP. But outside of that, I don't think there's many downsides from the process.
And if there's no sun, do you plan to use electricity to run the generators? Or you don't do them at all, or what?
Well, this is a photovoltaic array, so there's no onsite generator. It's very similar technology to what customers are putting on their homes. And so when the sun shines, it produces a DC current, and then that current is converted into AC and connected to our system. If the sun doesn't shine, it just doesn't produce DC, and then there's nothing put onto our system from the array.
Okay. No electricity to run energy or anything like that, huh?
No, no, but as I understand the developer's site plans, there's essentially no load, no electrical load on the site. So if the sun isn't shining, it just doesn't produce, and that's the end of the process. They don't have any meaningful load remaining on the site to run.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The survey did say it's windier here on Mondays, for whatever that's worth.
That'd be me, I guess.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Moving on to the public hearing ordinances, third reading and related resolutions. I'll call items eighteen and nineteen together. Approving the Swanson-Russell redevelopment agreement between the City of Lincoln and B&amp;H Enterprises LLC relating to the development of property located at twelve-oh-two P Street for construction of a new approximately twelve-thousand-square-foot office building, and authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds with a total not to exceed the amount of two million, four-hundred-thousand dollars for the City of Lincoln, Swanson-Russell redevelopment project located at Twelfth and P Streets.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, and the applicant in this case. The continuation of the hearing, I don't think, was based on the underlying Swanson-Russell project. I think that was well-understood and well-regarded. The piece that was left over essentially was the use of a bidding process that we've used on several occasions. Notice has been given in the form of the coverage of last week, an intervening article in the Lincoln Journal and a website notification. It's been up on the city website since then. The task today is to evaluate this idea, and we have the members of the public and the development community here to do that. I would like to say, just generally, this is in furtherance of a larger agenda that we've been at work on, on a number of years. When we came into being, along with, let's say, Councilman Emery, I think we are co-terminals in our timeline, it was not difficult to hear, or not uncommon to hear, that there was some tension between the business community and city administration generally, and how business was conducted. A chasm, if you will, between the two. A number of things have been done since then. One of them is the creation of the DSC, so that a developer can come to one location and hear from five city departments simultaneously, rather than to make five separate trips. The Public Works Department has published the access manual, so that a developer knows the rules by which they can be assured of getting a yes for their access plan. And if they can't, they know the process by which it can be massaged, or negotiated, or dealt with to make variations that oftentimes need to occur in the built environment. The Law Department has drafted essentially a standard tax increment financing agreement from which negotiations now proceed, and that's cut off time as well. And this is another. This is an attempt to use what efficiencies we can create in the bidding process to let developers who are oftentimes under very strict timelines, whether that's the building season, or whether it is their market. You've been faced with, for example, several student housing projects in recent months. Student housing projects have to be open in August to have any logical sense. If they open three weeks after school has begun, they've lost six months to a year of revenue. And these are twenty and thirty and thirty-five-million-dollar projects. Timing is everything. So in an attempt to bridge that difference, we brought forth this idea. We've used it on several occasions. Our Law Department says it's legal. But we understand that there's a concern in the community, and we want to respond to that as well. And so we will be listening to the testimony, just like everyone else will. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Landis, you indicated that this process has been utilized some. Any rough number as to how many projects have been...
I think you might, you'd have, I think, less than one hand in doing that.
Any other questions? John?
Just for clarity, as we delegate this process, you've got the city's tax-exempt status, so bonds are collected on that basis, if I'm not mistaken, on the interest?
There is...
Well, I'm sorry, it was also on the purchasing, there's no sales tax, if I'm correct.
That's true.
Now, is there any delineation? You know, we talk about public improvements that are done with the TIF, but there are also some things that adhere to the building. Do we have any difficulties on that, any problems that we're abusing the power or misusing it? Let me not, I withdraw the word abusing, I mean, are we misusing or stretching that where we're lending the city's tax-exempt status on sales tax?
If we do it, there is absolutely no doubt and no question. But if we send the, send it off to the state, the state evaluates that and will make an ultimate decision. And in the event the status was problematical, it would fall to the developer and not us.
I think that occurred on one development, did it not?
And the, what we will do is, and we've also told developers, we will forward to the state for their evaluation, the practice, and the state will decide, as it always had the right to do, what is or is not tax-deductible.
I could answer that, Rick, the Office of City Law Department. Taxes only applies for specific city public improvements, like sidewalks, sidewalk streets, sewers, that type of thing. You don't get the sales tax exemption for what we call public enhancements. So what the developer might do for facade treatment, energy enhancements, that's on his buck. That's not tax exempt. The issue comes up that when we do bid these projects through a private bid process as opposed to going through purchasing, there's a different mechanism of actually getting that exempt sale certificate issued so that those taxes don't have to be paid at the time of purchase. If that fails, the city could come back. If we had to pay that sales tax on actual exempt issues, we could file for a refund. But we're not exposing the people to advantage that they're not entitled to. You know, so the private developer doesn't get the sales tax exemption off of, like I said, his public enhancements for the facade treatment or energy treatment that he might put in his building.
If I could just, to clarify that, so there are TIF monies, pardon me, the TIF monies could be used for the public enhancements, the facade, but those, even though it's TIF money, they're subject to sales tax in this example.
Any other questions? Both of you, before you leave. We, how does this process that we're doing now compare to what we did when we made some changes for the arena?
Everything operates under a different law, so to speak. The arena was a construction manager at risk process, so they were able to have a mechanism of picking subcontractors differently than going through what a contractor might have. So, different rules, different situations. They're not totally analogous, but they're somewhat similar concepts of the bottom line comes out somewhat similar. So this process is, we've used it on at least three or four projects. It became more noticeable because we actually put the bidding procedures in the contract as opposed to a separate letter to the redeveloper, but it's...
Okay, that's good, Rick. Just, let's talk about then the pros and cons. Tell us, tell me the pros and the cons of this.
I'll share with you what I've heard, but it's second-hand.
Okay.
And in fact, we'll have some first-hand testimony, but let me review what's told.
Timing is critical, and so there's two probably aspects that you're going to hear. One is, if you have a project that has particularly a time sensitivity to it, getting things done exactly on time is critical, and it's costly if it's not. In the event the developer's in a position to manage the process with exactly the oversight that, you know, is laid out here and with city oversight, you basically have one folder of concerns that have to be dealt with and one agenda. If you put that into a city mechanism, and it could be whether it's in the purchasing department, or, by the way, on occasion, purchasing outsources inside city government, I understand. This is something I learned the last week. They've off-sourced that to Public Works on occasion. But if you outsource that, you're dealing with a party who has a hundred folders on their desk. All of city government is doing more with less. We would be hard-pressed to find a department who had the same number of employees as they did eight years ago. And in this case, the notion is to make sure that for timing's safety, you'd want that agenda to be handled by somebody who had no other competing obligations. So time is one. Secondly, there is a perception in the development community, and that is that they do oftentimes seek private bids, not for public business, but on analogous kinds of properties that the city would, on the same hand, bid as well. And they will report to you that they believe that the contractors make some differential in that, and that they are lower cost when it goes through the private sector. Those are the two things that I've heard from the development community, and they're here, and I think you'd be able to cross-examine them as well.
Dave, is there any indication that somehow this provides less transparency, or this puts city dollars more at risk through this process?
We don't think so. I think there's a matter of opinion on that that's become public over time. But the charter's obligations, the ordinance's obligations are all recited and complied with.
Is there any empirical evidence that any of those things have happened?
There's been no empirical evidence of a failure to execute the proper standards and carried out and finished. We did have an out-of-town developer who said, "I'd like to try that." And about the second thing they did, they mismanaged, I think, a notice provision. And we said, "Fine, thank you very much. That's not what you were supposed to do. We'll take it from here," and we did the whole thing over from the beginning.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this issue?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is two-three-three South Thirteenth, Suite Nineteen-Hundred, here in Lincoln. I wanted to at least share with you my position. I'm not here on behalf of any client. I'm here expressing my own opinion as to what department is in the best position to really conduct the public bidding aspect of tax increment financing. If you look back to the late 1980s, when I first started practicing law and working on redevelopment projects, there's been much evolution in this process, and much evolution in how the city conducts business. And I think that's a good thing. I mean, in my practice, and that's why they call it the practice law, I guess, because I constantly am refining what I do and constantly changing how I work with developers, work with communities outside of the development within the City of Lincoln. I represent probably over twenty cities around the state in their tax increment financing, their community development law. And I always try to adopt best practices, and it's always evolving. And I was just thinking back over the last ten years or so, what changes we have conducted within the City of Lincoln that actually make the process and the experience with the city more business-friendly. And I think there's, I came up with five or six just in the back of the room, one of which is the developer purchase of the tax increment financing indebtedness. That has greatly simplified the process, eliminating the public issuance of TIF bonds has been a very big help in this arena. The, we've also agreed on a change. We affected a statutory change in the community development law to deal with the ability to establish the effective date under the redevelopment agreements, and that is a key ingredient in being able to kind of control the sequence of capturing the tax increment that is being created by a project. Mr. Landis did mention the standardization of the redevelopment agreement. That has been, that has greatly simplified the process. We know what the expectations are, and we can communicate those to the clients beforehand. That's a very helpful aspect. We've come up with a standardized approach dealing with the cost-benefit analysis, which is a key public protection under the community development law. I think that's been very helpful. We have, one of the things that the city's implemented is the use of the Development Services Center, the DSC. I know my clients, both in-town and out-of-town, greatly appreciate the ability, especially my out-of-town clients, when they come into town with their architects, and able to meet with five departments or more at once and answer all the development questions and design questions, or that it's a very helpful tool. So I think all of these best practices that we've established over the last ten years or so have achieved greater efficiency and predictability, which is certainly a key ingredient for the development community. And consequently, I don't know if it's cause and effect, or whether it's a correlation at all, but there has been a lot of development over the last ten years, not only in downtown, but other redevelopment areas. So with respect to this bidding practice, I guess, from my experience, I think the bidding by urban development, I think it is in best position to know the, number one, requirements of the community development law, and, number two, the timing considerations that are being expressed by the developer. I had the inevitable task back in December to ask you to take action on a December fifteenth date, and there was a key ingredient for my client. He had to get it done and approved before the end of the year, and there was a key aspect for that. So one of the things that I have found in working with this public bidding process is that my clients want to avoid delay where possible. And working with the Urban Development Department, we're able to do that. It's also key for my clients to be able to coordinate the construction process on-site and not having, you know, wild card contractors in on the development, and that is a key aspect of it, and also the pricing that Mr. Landis mentioned. I think there is an aspect that, I think there's an expectation that the city automatically gets lower bids through a public bidding process, and I think that's a false expectation. I think history shows us otherwise. So I guess in my experience in working with the community development law and working with the needs of the developer, I think the Urban Development Department is well-adapted and has a great experience in being able to work with this public bidding process to the protection of the public benefit, and actually to help facilitate the development process. So with that, I'd happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you would like to speak this one, come on down.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Council, Mark Hunziker. I'm also appearing on my own behalf. I think my views on the subject of private bidding on these matters are fairly well-known at this point. However, I think it's important, I would echo Tom's comments about the progress that's been made over the past several years in streamlining and making the redevelopment process, in particular, a more orderly process, and one which is stand, and one which it takes less time to get through. I think that the use of the private bidding process, which absolutely mimics the public bidding process that the city uses, supervised by the Urban Development Department, is a process which saves time and saves money. And with that, I will not reiterate any more of the positive comments that Tom made, but I think those are all good comments about where we've been and where we're headed with this. And I think that it would be a mistake to take a step backward. So, I'm trying to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mark, does this put city dollars or TIF money anymore at risk than...
Absolutely not.
Okay.
The one thing that Tom mentioned about the developer purchase of the TIF obligations is that the developer is the entity at risk. The city's obligation is not a full faith and credit obligation. If the increment that supports the payment of those TIF obligations is not realized either by virtue of the value of the project, the developer loses. And if the money is not paid back in full at the end of the fifteen-year TIF increment, it's forgiven.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Carl.
Can I just follow up with that line? And that's the same regardless of which purchasing process?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yeah, the purchasing side of it has no impact on that at all.
Sorry, Carl, I didn't see. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Go ahead, sir. You can sign in afterwards if you would, please. You can sign in afterwards if you would please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Fugeron, representing Speedway Properties.
Could you spell that for us, please?
Last name is F-O-U-G-E-R-O-N.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Emery and Members of the Council, Speedway Properties has done a number of development properties in the community, as many of you well know. However, I think there's only been five that we're aware of that have used the TIF process, three of which since I've been on the Speedway team, the most recent one being the Speedway Sporting Village. We constructed an indoor soccer complex and trampoline facility, and the timeframe that we were working under was extremely short. From the time that we received approval of the redevelopment agreement, which was approved by the council last June 16th, signed by the mayor on the 20th of June, we obtained the building permit July 18th, and our contractor constructed a 93,000-square-foot clear-span open facility, and that was open and received an occupancy on December 2nd, 137 calendar days. And that included all of the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the other utilities to the project, roads and parking, at least sufficient parking to open that facility. And we had talked about the bidding of the infrastructure work. The timeframe that city purchasing gave us would have not allowed us to make that schedule. The city purchasing, I know, is extremely busy. As was mentioned, they've been asked to do more with less. They have a lot on their plate. We followed the bidding process as laid out by the city law department, and we felt that the process was open above. All of the records, all of the bidding notifications, the bids and so forth are certainly open and available for anybody that wants to inspect those or any audit purposes. So everything was done open and above board, and I might just mention, it was the same bidding process that I used when I was at the state, with state government. I was over there for 30 years and handled, I don't know how many hundreds of bidding, construction and remodeling projects for state agencies. And it was the same exact process of certain, a number of notifications in a public circulation, and results have always been the same, open and above board. So any questions? I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. There can't be too much transparency about what goes on in government. Remember what the motto on the state Capitol building is? Salvation of the state is the watchfulness of the citizen. Therefore, we need to have transparency, and we need to know what is going on as a citizen. The developers, of course, believe that there has to be expediency in their project. But that's one viewpoint. The other one is that the state, or the city, or the government needs to have the best interest of the taxpayers at heart. If they don't have enough employees, then they need to slow down the process of the approval. The other thing is that, are we talking about, Mr. Landis said that less than five projects had occurred, is he talking about the issue of having the developers do their own private seeking of, or running it through the state, or running it through the city? You know, what is the issue here? Are we speaking about Swanson-Russell, or are we speaking about something else?
Well, I think what I heard them say very clearly was, and I will let Dave come up and speak to that, but what we heard very clearly was, is that it's the same, it's the same process. It just depends on who is overseeing it. Is development overseeing it through urban development, or is process, or is the purchasing department doing it?
Okay, we're just speaking to that issue. All right. Then the public would want to know that the purchasing department is doing that to stand for the taxpayer. The developers have their own impetus for what they want. And in a democracy, we need to have all viewpoints presented. We need to have all things known to the public.
Okay, I'll let Dave speak to that.
What?
I will let Dave speak to that when he comes back up.
All right.
Any other questions?
Is he going to speak now while I'm up here?
Dave, you want to speak to that? Okay. Ask your questions, and he'll answer them all when he comes up here.
My quest, my response to his statements were that if they don't have enough employees, then they need to slow down the process.
Very well.
All right. That timing on the developers' part may be an issue, but that's one side of the matter.
Gotcha.
The other side is the oversight by the state or the government representatives who are in the employ of the elected officials. If there's less than five projects that this issue has occurred upon, you know, when did it come up? What had been done before that time?
Try to get you answers. I'll try to get you answers. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not through.
Well, then, continue on.
Is he on my time, or is he going to be on his time?
He'll be on his time.
On his time, and then I can respond?
No, he gets last rebuttal. That's the way I read the rules a little while ago.
All right. So we would speak for the public, that there should be the balance of power on the issue, and that the purchasing department should continue to run this program as they have in the past.
One minute. I'll give you a little extra. Go ahead.
Okay. And is that the final five minutes, or is that the warning?
That was the final five, but go ahead.
Okay. And so we would speak for transparency above all.
Okay, I think we would too. And that's why I asked the question, is there any empirical evidence that there's been a violation? And the answer was no.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Landis?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this?
I'm sorry, Richard. I didn't really mean to do that.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, I did. No, I didn't really.
Richard Escovell, 733 West Cummings Street. As you all are aware, my thoughts on the use of TIF, but we're not discussing that though, I understand. So looking at these two items, though, my question is, what does Lincoln get out of doing TIF or doing this $2.4 million tax allocation bond? I brought the question up before, and the state person said that on some of the project, we do not collect state income tax, so therefore we would not collect city income tax, but that's only a penny and a half on a dollar, which is not much. And the second thing is if they're using foreign contractors, anybody outside the city of Lincoln, we do not collect anything on wages. The state doesn't collect anything on wages. City doesn't collect anything on wages, and you surely can't make up what we pay them on one and a half cents if they buy something. So this question, you know, this is a federal, this is a city and state giveaway that doesn't really benefit the city, because there's no way to collect taxes on the money given for wages if they don't live in the city or in the state. One other question, and I'm not quite clear, Mr. Hunsaker said, if we use TIF, it's for a 15-year period, and if it's not made up in 15 years, the remaining amount is forgiven? I think that's what he said.
I'll ask him to clarify that.
All right.
I'm also asking him to answer your question about the difference in the process. Your concern about, the concern about wages and some of that, if the processes are exactly the same, then nothing changes. And this is really about what process we're using and not, and I'm sorry, I want him to clarify that for us, too. Okay? But I will tell you that we were told last week, I think it's, and I see the people from the company here, but I think it was 80 to 100 jobs that were, they were considering moving to Lincoln, or to Omaha versus leaving here, that are going to stay here. I think that's something Lincoln gets out of it.
So that's a state income tax.
I'm just, I'm saying that those are jobs we wouldn't have had here in Lincoln if we don't, if they don't build their new building.
Okay, but who collects the income tax on the wages?
I don't have the answer. I'll find out.
City doesn't, so.
Clarification, the city doesn't have an income tax. It has a sales tax.
That is correct. That is correct. And Lincoln and Omaha get short-changed on state income tax, because most of that money goes to outstate Nebraska, since Lincoln and Omaha are pretty self-sufficient. And with TIF money, I know that Doug and all of you explained to me that the state reimburses the city for school.
The schools, not the city.
Schools, but who pays the state taxes? We do. So it's taken out of one hand to the other hand.
Okay. Dave? I'm sorry, anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Before we go again? Okay, Dave.
There were a couple of questions. I'll see if I can respond to them. We've used this process about five times. For example, the West Van Doren Sports Park, as you heard Ken Fugeron said. This was done by a letter between the law department and the developer. This is the first time it's appeared actually in the redevelopment agreement itself, which is why you would see it in a way that you wouldn't have seen it before. So in answer to the question, this mechanism has been used, it's been used about five times. That is a small number compared to the number of times that we've done redevelopment agreements, and this is a relatively new phenomenon. So the answer, that is, it's been done five times, about five times, and in the last year or so. And the reason you see it now is because it appears on the face of the redevelopment agreement. The second thing that Richard asked was, what does Lincoln get out of it? And one of the things that will happen is that we'll have evaluation growth. Eventually, that'll become taxable. We'll have a denser, more efficient use of the downtown infrastructure, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And we'll have a longstanding employer who has chosen to expand in Lincoln rather than Omaha, which was and presented them with a very attractive offer to go up there, and they've chosen not to be here. I believe Mr. Hunsaker was not understood properly if the, if, if the understanding was that tax increment financing was somehow forgiven. His point was that in the event the tax increment financing amount of money is not sufficient to do the previously agreed-upon project, that which is received is spent for the project, and the developer does the rest on their own dime. There is no forgiveness, and that understanding, I think, would differ. I'm sure if Mark was here, he would say the same thing. Are there other questions? Yes.
Trent?
We have two amendments. The second amendment is mine to provide a little bit more transparency to the process by adding a statement that the bids should be opened to all bidders, a date at which the sealed bids are going to be received and the location where they're going to be opened, that the bids would be publicly opened and read in the presence of all visitors or people that want to attend, where the plans and specifications can be examined, that the redevelopers has the right to reject all bids, and the city representative would be present when it's opened. Your thoughts on that?
Many of the elements in your amendment, Councilman, reflect what's there as well, but you've added some elements to it. Oddly enough, there's not a great deal in Ms. Kinsey's remarks that I would disagree with. I think transparency is a paramount public value. I believe that those standards represent that transparency, and I think we meet that standard. If you'd like to elevate that standard in this case, my guess is both the urban development department and the development community would be able to live with and accept and adopt those. There is no attempt to circumvent transparency. But there was a value choice, if I heard that correctly, and that is, you know what? Transparency trumps everything else, and we need to be slower. If we were choosing between no transparency or a limited transparency and expedition, I would agree. But I think the standard is everything that's in our charter and everything that's in our ordinances are being done. And if that's the case, then I do think slower is not the approach that we want if we're trying to bridge the gap with a business community that provides the engine of investment that makes the city grow. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for the benevolence of the rest of the council members, just so that Mr. Hunsaker doesn't shake his head completely off back there. I want to make sure that he gets an opportunity to make sure that his explanation is exactly correct. So, Mark, I'm going to give you one more chance, and Ms. Kinsey, I'm going to make sure that you got all of your questions asked. I'm not going to make sure that you got the answer you necessarily wanted, but I want to make sure you got them all asked.
Mr. Chairman, my, my point was that once the project is complete and the amount of the TIF obligation is determined, that is an obligation by the city to the developer who has purchased that bond or obligation from the city. To the extent that the taxes paid on the project are insufficient to repay the developer for that obligation, that obligation is forgiven at the end of the 15 years. It is the city's obligation to pay that bond, and if there aren't sufficient taxes available to pay it, that amount is forgiven.
A deal made is a deal made.
A deal made is a deal made, and all the risk is on the developer who purchases that obligation.
I may, when you say forgiven, I think add the words forgiven by the developer, so the city is not on the hook.
Of course.
Well, I just want to be clear for our audience here.
Yeah, depends on where you are. From your side, it does, of course, but from our side, it...
Okay, yeah, I mean, obviously.
For clarity.
The city is, has the obligation to pay the bond. The developer holds the bond. If the taxes that the city is using to pay the bond are insufficient to pay the bond, the developer doesn't get paid. The obligation is forgiven.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make sure that we had that clarified. Ms. Kinsey, did you get your questions answered?
Sort of.
Okay, that's the best I can do. Next item, please.
Okay, that is at the end of our public hearing, and we can go into the voting session. So are we ready for item 13?
Sure.
Item 13 is the Use Permit 15002, Application of TNN Investments for Authority to Construct a Multifamily Development Consisting of Four Thirty-Plex Buildings for a Total of One Hundred and Twenty Dwelling Units, Including an Adjustment to the Maximum Height and the Parking Requirements on Property Generally Located at Northwest 12th Street and Isaac Drive. That was introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second. Second by Trent. Discussion. Call a roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next items, public hearing ordinances, second reading, related resolutions are items 14 through 17. Public hearing, items 18. Approving the Swanson-Russell Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Lincoln and B&amp;H Enterprises LLC relating to the redevelopment of property located at 1202 P... Enterprises LLC relating to the redevelopment of property located at 1202 P Street for construction of a new approximately 12,000 square foot office building, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roy. Seconded by Trent.
And I'd move to amend with motion amend number two, which, as I said before, provides a little bit more transparency, has the bidding requirements go up on both the urban development and the purchasing agents' websites, as well as a statement to potential bidders, date which sealed bids must be received and location they're open, bids be publicly opened and read in presence of all bidders who attend, where the bids and plans can be examined, the redevelopers has the right to reject, and that a city representative will be present when they open.
Second.
Second by Roy. Discussion. Jonathan.
Well, I just, I want to thank Trent for working on this because I think there has been a misunderstanding of the process out there, and it's led to a certain amount of concern about whether or not the taxpayers are getting a good deal, and how do we know that? I think this helps address those concerns by showing that we have a transparent process, that the information will be posted so the public can see it, and that, I, I, I think this is very good, so I appreciate you working on this, Trent.
Really? I agree that the amendment, the Second Amendment that we're proposing is a good thing, the project is a good thing, but much of the testimony we heard today was, came about because of an, basically, an internal turf battle between somebody in purchasing and urban development. And that's where it should have stayed, in my opinion. It's not a whistleblower issue, because to be a whistleblower, in my opinion, you have to first, what you're saying has to be true, which I don't think it was, and second of all, it's not, can't be just opinion, which I think it was just opinion. And so if I were going to put a metaphor to this, I'd say this was a big, stinking load of sewage that got driven past disrespectful straight to insubordination. And any organization cannot function properly with that kind of insubordination going on. It is contrary to good order and discipline, and I would recommend to the mayor that he take administrative action, disciplinary action, right away. This is not the kind of stuff we need to go on internal to our city organization. But I will support the amendment and the ordinance.
Any other, any other comments? Jeff, one question real quickly. The amendment number one, we can vote that down and still vote for amendment number two.
Amendment number one was prepared if the council, after reviewing the contract, decided to take the process out.
Okay.
We wanted to have it prepared in case you wanted to consider it. It hasn't been offered, you don't have to deal with it.
Number two stands on its own and will be part of the existing policy.
Correction between the two.
Very good, so just want to make sure we vote the right way. Okay. Call a roll, please, on the amendment, please.
So this is for motion to amend.
Motion to amend number two.
Number two. Okay. Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Motion to amend number one. Discussion.
No, we don't need it. We go with the main motion.
Very well, main motion.
Okay, main motion.
Can we discuss the main motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, this, you know, the issue that, that we have uncovered here, I think, you know, it's great that it's come out, that we know what's, what's being done, and we've learned that there are some efficiencies that are being done as a result. We've learned that there's some money that has been saved, and hopefully that those funds are going back into the community. The, the concerns that have been raised, transparency is a huge concern, and a very big concern. In this case, we've got one city agency looking over it versus a different city agency, so I don't, don't know that there's any difference really in, in the transparency. I mean, we still have city departments looking at these contracts. I guess one of the, one of the concerns, though, that was raised had to do with, with utilizing local employment, and I know that is something that our city's purchasing department really does oftentimes, if not encourage, require. Then, and that's, that's something that I think we do want to encourage urban development to do. You know, these are projects in the community, and we really want to see our, our city employees, if at all possible, being beneficiaries of this, to put local people to work. With that, I'm supportive.
Any other comments? Well, let me just say that, I appreciate the fact that we've had an opportunity to discuss this. I appreciate Councilman Fellers bringing forward what I believe is a reasonable accommodation that will provide the things that purchasing was concerned about. It's unfortunate that it was, that it happened the way it did, and I apologize to the people at Swanson-Russell for who, who kind of got held up in this and were in the middle of this, and, and I'm sorry for that. We value you as a company here in Lincoln, we thank you for staying here. And I, I think we're all for transparency. I think in this case, unfortunately, this was a solution looking for a problem. And as I, as I said this evening, there's no empirical evidence there was a problem, so let's just settle this and move on. Call a roll, please.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 19, Authorizing the Issuance of Tax Allocation Bonds with a Total Not to Exceed the Amount of $2.4 Million for the City of Lincoln Swanson-Russell Redevelopment Project Located at 12th and P Streets, Introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Just for the record, the bond amount is $374,000. The, it was a typo in the newspaper, and the ads that 24, $2,400,000 was actually the total purchase cost of the project, so TIF is only 374,000.
And I would add, that's, that's in the document, it was just the, what was here published on that. Thank you.
We need to get second first.
Second.
Second by Trent. Now, now you can discuss it, John, if you'd like to say something.
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Pail mentioning that. Yeah, we, we've got everything correct in the documents, it's just what was in the agenda, it had the wrong amount. So again, the actual amount that would be, the tax increment finance would be the 374,000, and that's premised on a $2.4 million investment in the project.
Okay. Any other discussion? I appreciate Councilman Christensen, Councilman Fellers taking this over, Larry was not here, and so there's a little there, so let's, call a roll, please.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Pail.
Item 20. Amending Section 10.02.254 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to parking services enforcement area to include portions of 19th Street, 21st Street, and Transformation Drive that bisect the University of Nebraska Innovation Campus, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Trent. Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Call a roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 21. Approving the 23rd and O Street Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Lincoln and Eustis LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located between 23rd Street and the north-south alley between 23rd and 25th Streets and N and O Streets for renovation of a large retail building and related improvements, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Roy. Seconded by Trent. Discussion, John.
I just asked that somewhere in the project, in a nondescript area where the bakery used to be, that they label on there, John Camp used to clean this greasy base bakery at the old Safeway.
Well, I have a theory where they could. I'll let her go at that. Carl.
Yeah, this, this really is a great project. I mean, this, this building had, it suffered for a while, maybe before John was there, and it...
I tried.
It was really, it's really great to help stabilize this part of, kind of, the entryway into downtown. Certainly, the services that they're provided are needed, and it's a very attractive addition to the community.
You know, a unique thing about this building, it has a tunnel, or a part of our panel valley flows underneath it.
Any other, any other questions or comments? I would agree with Carl, and I would, I would agree with John. I think this is a, this is a great project, and this is really a win-win. It cleans up, or it certainly will be a hub for a part of O Street that is, will look a lot better when this is in there. And additionally, will have services that the people in the area need very desperately, so I will vote for this. Call a roll, please.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 22. Amending the Fiscal Year 1415 CIP to authorize and appropriate $450,000 in TIF funds for the 23rd and O Street project, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Trent. Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Call a roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 23. Authorizing the Issuance of Tax Allocation Bonds with a Total Not to Exceed the Amount of $450,000 for the City of Lincoln 23rd and O Street Project, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roy. Seconded by Trent. Discussion. Call a roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. And Resolutions, First Reading, are Items 24 through 29. There are no ordinances, First Reading. The Pending List Date Certain are Items 30 and 31, and then Pending List is Item 32. And asking to address the council on a matter...
Anybody who'd like to speak at the open mic, come forward, please. Thank you.
...to a paradise on earth, where a roach tree. We are tenderly concerned for the rights of every child. Every child has the right to have two hetero-parents who kindly provide care with food, clothes, and warm shelter. Every child has the right to continue to be alive in the womb. Every child has the right for parents to give medical attention when child is ill or with trauma. Every child has the right to their pregnant mom to not smoke, drink, or do drugs. Every child has the right to not have a whore as a mommy. Every child has the right to not be neglected. Every child has the right not to be abused. Every child has the right to be protected from cruel acts. Every child has the right to not be molested. Every child has the right to not have a gay teacher or gay club leader. Every child has the right to an education from five to 20 years old that includes reading, writing, arithmetic, science, with proof, history, and work skills. Every child has the right not to have drugs in the home, school, or community. Every child has the right not to have secondhand pot smoke in the home in order for the child to have a memory to do their homework. Every child has the right to not have a teacher that wears ammunition. Every child has the right to not have a pot vaporizer done to a room. Every child has the right to be taught 15 minutes every day how to be kind. Every child has the right at 10 to 18 years old to work no more than two hours a weekday after school at a store, farm, or office. Every child has the right to be home from school by 6:00 PM. Every child has the right to, to have homework curfew enforced by police by 7:00 PM at home. Every right, excuse me, every child has the right to be told to wear a seatbelt in a car. Every child has the right to get three-week voucher for vacations per year. Every child has the right to not have a toy ammunition. Every child has the right not to see an adult mating. Every teen has the right to be instructed at 13 how a baby is made and how to avoid making a baby before graduation. Every teen has the right to seek a driver's permit the January before graduating, and every, every teen has the right to be able to test for driver's license after graduating from high school. Every teen has the right to be instructed to date with 100 questions at a parent's home before family dinner while teen is staying in their parent's home. Teach that a huge consequence of a baby can come after a proposal to marry. Every teen has the right to be instructed to date with 100 questions in a cafe after leaving home as a teen to work or go to college. Everyone is a child, or everyone has been a child. We are a children's crusade.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? It's right here, sir. Right here.
He's got, he's got handouts.
Okay, we'll take it. Thank you. Yep, that's fine.
I'm Richard Hedrick, and according to the newspaper, they were changing the TIF where they have the contractor have more control, and I'm against that. It should be left where it is. The receivers of TIF will take care of their cells. Taxpayers are not always responsible by the taxpayers. Years ago, the city had a conservative sidewalk inspector who took care of himself due to the tax, of the taxpayers. The sidewalk inspector would not allow a repair of a sidewalk, and would not be able to raise or grind it down. It had to be new. The Lincoln City Council and Mayor, despite many complaints, did not rein in the sidewalk inspector to protect the taxpayers. The people called for a vote to stop this abuse. The vote of the people was to stop the requirement that the owner of the properties were responsible for the sidewalk on their properties. The taxpayers now are responsible. The taxpayers are now contracting out for over $2 million to prepare the city streets. I don't know how the conservative sidewalk inspector was benefiting from his inspecting job. The two houses on 18th Street were tore down. The heavy equipment operator did not know what he was doing. The operator did not cover the sidewalks with dirt to distribute the weight of the equipment. He pulverized the sidewalk. Eventually, the first responsibility for inspecting the house were not inspected, they were not, the sidewalks were left in disrepair for years. The taxpayers paid to replace the sidewalk years later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Please come forward.
I am speaking on my own behalf as a Vietnam veteran. I have talked to many Vietnam veterans, and I know that we have two Vietnam-era veterans on the council. How many of you know that this is the starting of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War? Okay. What has the city done for the... What has the city done for the Vietnam veteran? What's being planned for the Vietnam veteran? Nothing. Nothing that I've heard of. And then, and then I see this thing by the city. It's a commemoration of the 40th anniversary of the fall of Saigon. First off, who's commemorating it? Our government caused us to lose and not win the war, and the fall of Saigon on April 30th, 1975, I don't think that would be commemorated by the Vietnamese either. And on one of the pages, it has who's supporting this thing with their patches. Now, two of them I am very concerned about. One is the DAV, and the other is the POW MIA. It's put on by Lincoln Community Foundation, Emeritus, Bryan Health, Humanities, Nebraska Leadership, Lincoln, Judson Irrigation, and Vietnamese Community, Lincoln, Nebraska. Now, why am I upset? Because they're having an event, and they're on city property. One is at Lincoln High School, which is city-owned, and the other is at the LEED Center, which is state-owned. And let's see. I believe there was one at the odd center, but I can't see that right now. To me, this is the biggest slap in the face that you can give a Vietnam veteran. Here we're commemorating something that was very negative, affected the whole United States, still affects everybody that lived during that era, and then using the POW MIA and DAV symbols on it. I call them both. I do not have a response by the DAV, but as far as they know, they were not in support of this. As far as the POW MIA, I did receive this response. "You have my assurance that the League is not a sponsor of this event, nor would it be our place. We have a single, very clearly stated mission to obtain the fullest possible accounting of U.S. personnel still missing from service in the Vietnam War. Having said that, we also have no ability to legally restrict use of our logo. When developed in 1970, we never anticipated its use in 2015, or we would have sought legal protection via copyright or trademark. Feel free to note that whatever the intention or objective of the 40th commemoration is not sponsored by the National League of POW MIA families. In reality, there are many commemorities going on that are associated with the 50th anniversary commemoration of the Vietnam War, dedicated to honoring and remembering those who served, with emphasis on those who were POW MIA's, including renewal of our nation's commitment to account as fully as possible for unreturned veterans. Celebrating the fall of Saigon is not one which I believe most Americans, including the POW MIA families, would wish to engage due to the massive suffering of allies and friends that resulted. I think it is a shame for the Lincoln to have the name to this, associated with this and use Lincoln property, because Vietnam veterans have not been recognized since the end of the war." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this side? Who'd like to speak, please come forward.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. I'd like to speak to two issues. One is the Antelope Valley report that was made recently that money had been found or would be used to fix sidewalks. This is inappropriate, in our opinion, because 2 million or more is still owed on Antelope Valley. It should not be money given away here until that balance is repaid. The second issue is that the feds have had inadequacies or inappropriateness of an audit of the program turned over to them, and they may be wanting compensation repaid to them for that. They work slowly, and you need to be cognizant of the fact that this might happen and keep the money in the account. The second issue that I want to speak to is about the TIF. The TIF has been misused in this city. At the present time, the developers are required, in order to get their TIF approved, to give back to the city a percentage of that so that it can be used for public usage. I don't think that the lawyers who spoke for the developers would approve of this if they knew about it. It's called TIF extractions. The public definitely would not approve of it. This needs to be presented to the public. It needs to be used as further transparency. It intimidates the developers. There is a rumor, a reputation going around that the developers have some difficulties with the city speaking up to them because of this and other intimidations. The developers should not be manipulated, again, anymore or misused anymore than the state government or the city government is misused. Mr. Emery and Mr. Eskridge speak to transparency. This administration is not as transparent as it could be. We need to have more sunlight on what's going on downtown so that the public knows. I am in disagreement with Mr. Christensen for reprimanding this employee who brought this to the public's attention about the purchasing issues. I get calls, watchdogs report to me, the public reports to me many, many times of things that are going on that are inappropriate. Now, some of them may be grudges against the city, some of the reports may be false, but many of the reports are true. And I would encourage you, as a city council, and the people who are running for the city council, to make transparency their motto for their campaign statements. Thank you.
Well, since you selected me out specifically, I would say to you, if you have empirical evidence that these things have happened, there's a lady in the back I'm sure would be more than happy to run it in the paper.
I hope she does. I hope she will.
If you have them, bring them forward. I hate to hear things like, well, we've heard, and there's a rumor. I hate to deal with that. It's poor business all the way around. If we have empirical evidence, bring it on forward. We would love to deal with that, too, I believe.
Do you?
I think my colleagues would, would agree that we would like to deal with that.
Okay. Good. Do you want me to report everything I hear to you?
I'd like you to have empirical evidence that those things are happening, because anything can be reported.
Oh, that's true.
Okay.
But let me also say that within rumor, there is some truth.
If you can prove it, there certainly is.
Yes.
If you can, it is just what it is, rumor.
And I would be glad, for the rest of the time that you're on the council, to report that to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, John.
Oh, I was gonna, I'm a German.
Yeah, go ahead.
Move it, do it.
That's fine. Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Call or roll?
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes. Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We are adjourned.[1773.73]